I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting for the evening of Monday, March 25th, 2024. This meeting is being held in the Harvard Hearing Room at the Town Hall in McCout Square. It is being televised live and it may also be on Zoom.
Who's echoing?
May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Luttrell?
Yes.
Mr. Luttrell?
Yes.
Mr. Matrucci?
Yes.
Mr. Biecking?
Here.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Power?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Luttrell, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see that we have no public comment tonight, but we do have a special announcement. You will notice that we are wearing T-shirts tonight in support of autism awareness. Mr. Luttrell?
Thank you. Yes, April is Autism Awareness Month, as we are all aware. Winthrop Police Department is selling T-shirts, as you see on, and also patches. And 100% of the proceeds are going to the Doug Flutie Jr. Foundation for Autism Awareness. T-shirts are $20, patches are $10. They're available at the Winthrop Police Department, or please feel free to contact Lieutenant Steven Rogers. As part of the fundraising effort, they will also be having their fourth annual Winthrop Fire and Police vs. Winthrop All-Stars Hockey Game on Saturday, April 13th, at 6:30. Counselor DiMarco will be in net for the All-Stars, and I use that term loosely. But I encourage you to look for your T-shirts, purchase your T-shirts, support the Doug Flutie Jr. Foundation for Autism Awareness, and as always, support Autism Awareness Month. Thank you all.
Thank you. This evening, we have two special guests to talk about what is going on in our schools. They're going to be presenting the school improvement plans. They, this is a process that we have moved up in order to be able to consider these plans within our budgeting. And with that, are we ready? And who's going first? Okay, excellent.
And I told Mr. Curly and Mr. Crombie that I would just kind of start by filling in a little bit on the role of the site council in the schools. Ed reform, you know, in 1993, put a lot of, a lot of power back in the principals' hands in running their building, but at the same time, they wanted to have community built in. So the site councils are made up of the principal, teachers, parents, community members, and at the higher level, secondary level, can have students on it as well. And they help to, you know, have the conversations around the table about what's really necessary for the schools and what they feel should be the next steps for schools to take. And so they spend the whole year, they meet roughly once a month.
Yep, once a month periodically.
And help, you know, advise from all those different perspectives on the next steps to take to school and help them to write and then initially vote on their school improvement plans to bring to you for your approval.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I know a great deal of effort goes into this. So if you can present, and then we will have an opportunity for the committee to ask questions after.
Sure, great. Well, first, I want to thank the committee for having us present tonight. So in planning for tonight, the building principals knew that the committee would have a chance to read and review our school improvement plans. As you can see, the plans are very detailed, as they take months to complete. In addition, it's important for the committee to know that the school improvement plan is also seen as a working document. Often, action steps might change as we find more effective and efficient ways to meet our goals. With all that said, since our plans align with the district strategic plan, excuse me, we felt it was best to focus on our level-based goals. What you don't see in a school improvement plan is the whys. Tonight, as we present our level-based goals, we will share the why in each goal in each of the buildings. So the first district objective is high-quality rigorous instruction and curriculum goals. So 1.1, our level-based goal is to expand on providing students with authentic student-centered learning experiences for ELA and math. Ultimately, the reason why is to increase student-centered experiences. To sum that up, the ultimate goal is to increase student engagement in all classrooms. We want our students collaborating, having productive struggles, and learning from each other. 1.2, our goal is at the middle school to enhance middle school students' proficiency in analytical writing by utilizing instructional strategies with best practices in writing, excuse me, in writing instruction. Ultimately, the reason why is we want to improve student writing. Standardized tests and often internal assessments, students are asked to focus on text-dependent questions. In order to do that, we want our students to be more prepared on how to answer those questions. For example, can they make a claim, excuse me, a claim, can they show evidence, and can they provide reasoning? So that's the ultimate goal. 1.3, our goal is to improve collaboration and reduce learning gaps across grade levels within Winthrop Middle School. The reason why? We want to increase structured collaboration opportunities. We want our teachers to observe each other's more. We have a lot of experts in our building, and often, we want to try to find those structured times. So if I'm a teacher in grade six, for example, ELA, I would love to visit maybe a grade seven, eight, a grade seven, eight ELA class, or maybe even a subject matter. The struggle we have is obviously being on different schedules at each grade levels, trying to find the opportunities we could take advantage of our schedule, whether that means making changes or finding coverages, because we want to try to create an environment where our teachers are going to want to visit each other in the classroom. 1.4, consistent implementation of high-quality curriculum and structural practices. The reason why? We want to continue to improve our common planning time process. We've been very fortunate in years past to receive a grant for illustrious mathematics. Now, at this point, we're funding it as a school district. It's great to have these materials, but ultimately, if you want to implement and improve, you have to provide your staff the ability to do that. So that's something that we want to focus on moving forward. We've been very lucky over the past couple of years to have a part-time ELA and math coach, two fantastic educators, Mrs. Carsley and Mr. Kirby, who have retired. So they've been able, for example, Mr. Kirby has kind of been overseeing the implementation of illustrious math as well as the entire math department, and Mike's been integral in terms of that process. Mrs. Carsley, fantastic ELA teacher. She's working with our teachers in grade six, seven, eight ELA, specifically in grade seven and eight, to try to create a more environment around literature circles. So between the work she's putting in with Ms. Friendzis, our assistant principal, and our staff is, we want our, we want these classes in terms of to be more student-centered. By doing that is having, you know, structured opportunities where, how can I phrase it? Where the students are leading these discussions. And by having, whether it's, you know, a lead teacher or a part-time coach, and providing these opportunities to plan week to week and make adjustments to our units, we're hoping to see even more success than we have the past couple of years. So regarding District Objective 1, High Quality Rigorous Instruction and Curriculum Goals, those are the Winthrop Middle School level-based goals and the reasons why. I guess I can jump, if it's okay, to jump to the second one and take questions after the third objective, if that's okay?
Yep.
Why you can't move this?
Okay. Okay. So the second district goal is teaching all students in a safe and welcoming environment. So what does that mean at the middle school? 2.1, creating effective systems of integrating student supports that break down the barriers to success and build up student strengths. We want to take our process and make it more efficient. Ultimately, we want to identify student strengths in areas they can grow for all students. It's often, people often focus on students who may be struggling. Students at all levels can make growth. And by trying to, trying to make our process more efficient, it's a better job for us to support our students in grade six, seven, and eight, and so on. 2.2, increase the number of students supported by the S3 Whole Child Review Process. So I don't know how familiar the committee is with S3, with the work of the entire district. It's a whole child review process. Kind of what I talked about in 2.1 is how can we, as a school, plan out and provide supports for all students? Our ultimate goal at the end of a three-year period is to have student support plans for all students, meeting periodically throughout the school year, and being able to identify the number of students who have supports, but also identifying the strengths of all students. So when students move on from grade six, seven, and eight, you hope to see their projection about, do they need more supports or less supports? And then when they move on to the high school with Mr. Crombie and his staff, they'll have a good understanding of what that incoming ninth grader looks like over the past three years, but also going back to the younger levels. Currently, last year was kind of like a pilot year for us, where we did, we did this with 25 students, one teacher, one homeroom. This year, we're working with our grade seven Wolves team, and we are working with 70 students to create these student support plans. There's a lot of time and effort and training that goes into it. And our goal next year is to do one team at each grade level, which would be approximately half the school. And then the following year, we're hoping to have this process in place for the entire school. It doesn't mean that other students who aren't a part of this process aren't gaining supports, but in terms of the training and tracking our progress, it's extremely time-consuming and a lot of work to be done. So working with the S3 team and the PD or the facilitators for the organization we're working with, this is the rollout that they recommend for the school. 2.3, which is always a challenge at the middle school level, providing safe and balanced technology use across all grade levels. The reason why is we want to increase awareness for our educators and our students. Ideally, as we know, technology is not, is not going away. It's a tool. So how can we support our students, but also our families at home? Because technology is always changing. Moving on to the third objective, professional culture and community engagement. So 3.1, increase participation, excuse me, increase participation in professional development in a culture of continuous improvement. Why? We want to provide more opportunities for our staff, especially our staff internally, in having them facilitate some high-quality professional development. Whether it's been my eight years at the middle school, or when I worked at the ATC or the high school, I always felt that the PD from the people inside typically is more effective. Teachers are more comfortable. I think they're more able to engage. And we have a lot of experts in, in this district, so our goal is to try to provide more of those opportunities. 3.2, increase collaboration with community partners for educational enhancement. So why? We want to use the people in the community. There's different resources out there that we're aware of. There's some that we're not aware of. We want to be able to have it for our team when they meet to, you know, in terms of the S3 process. If we're reviewing how a student is doing, right, how can we support them? So what we're doing right now is we're identifying as part of the S3 process a resource map of, so we sit down and we meet three times a year and we're discussing students, is if a student's struggling in particular areas, we can go to our resource map. That's, that's basically like one of the tools we're using to make sure that we can do what we can to support the students, whether it's internally or outside in the community. Where sometimes you might have a meeting, a team might be discussing a student, and maybe the staff isn't fully aware of what there is to offer within our own school, but out in the community. So by this S3 process, this is going to tie in all the different things that we're doing and who we work with in the community, with the goal of hopefully supporting our students from one year to the next. And lastly, cultivation, excuse me, cultivation of expertise for effective teaching practices. Why? We want to improve our teaching practices. As a whole, teachers, you know, compared to most, you know, in terms of what other people might do for a living, is our teachers have to continue going to school, continue getting professional development, things like that. Is, we want to take those resources. And kind of what we discussed before, or what I shared before, is we want to use that to train our staff. Everybody, whether it's the Fort Banks, the ATC, the middle school, the high school, have experts in different areas. So we want to be able to use each other to improve. And after Mr. Crombie presents, he'll discuss some of the next steps that we'll kind of take within our buildings in terms of helping us move forward to try to meet our goals. And each year, when we look back at a, at a school improvement plan, we'll notice that we've met goals, we've made some progress, and if we don't meet the goal, what was the reason? And how can we do that the following year? So I know that was a lot to throw at you, so I'll open it up to any questions from anybody in the committee.
Questions, yes.
Me? Thank you so much, Brian. I appreciate your time, as always. I think, you know, you do a really good job with this. You could see you take the time and put in the effort. And, you know, we hope that the results show, right? I'm more, I don't know, old, I guess, old-school. I like, and I don't know the answer to this question, but I'd like to see measurable results.
Sure.
You know, not instantaneous, because nothing's instantaneous, but, you know, we could look at MCAS scores, but that's 14 months later, and it's like, oh, did it work? Did it not work? Are we going to change again? Are we going, I don't really know what the answer is, but I'd like to see, instead of more verbiage, more measurable goals. Do you have any idea how we could?
Yeah, so I can speak about that. So in terms of, so obviously, we kind of changed the process of writing our plans in the format, right? And when you create a school improvement plan, you try to have it written so everybody in the school community can understand. You try to be, you want to be specific. We also want to be broad so everybody can understand, right? So in the far-right column, when it has anticipated outcomes and evidence, at the end of the year, I would hope that we'd be able to provide evidence that would help measure, you know, certain, I would say all the goals. Because if you're looking to expand, you know, that might look, that might look different than when, if you're looking at maybe the first objective regarding high curriculum instruction, right? Is I would be able to, at the end of the year, I would hope to, be able to, for each of those level-based goals, provide you evidence that would say if we've met our goal, if we've made some progress or no progress. But we can obviously, you know, look back in the future in terms of how we can write those, be more specific. But obviously, you know, with the timeline and with the new school year starting, and like I said, it's a working document. So what we put down here for anticipated outcomes and evidence, the evidence might change during the course of the year based on, you know, in terms of like certain things with the budget. If you get certain resources that, you know, that we're hoping to get in certain goals, that can help. If you're not, and you have to change how you might, you might be able to reach that goal. So, Mr. Luttrell, I would love to say at the end of the year, I would love to say, okay, for example, 1.1, I'd love to put a link to a document that kind of lays out all the evidence and say, you know, we met our goal, we had some progress, or we did not meet our goal.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Jim, go ahead.
Just, just a quick follow-up then, because you kind of led into it. But again, I understand what you're talking about. I'd just like to see a measurable, you know, it's not like A, B, C. Oh, went from a B to an A. It's, you know, that simple, but it's not that simple, I guess. But you did mention, which was going to be my second point, is budget.
Yep.
And what can we do to help you reach these goals, I guess, is the most important thing, right? Because you didn't, nothing you really said to me laid out a need, like a want, that will help you do something.
Sure.
Do you, I mean, I'm sure you're thinking about that as you're going through the budget process, but just maybe you might want to talk about the budget a little bit.
So specific things that I obviously included in our request for the middle school is retaining our middle school part-time coaches for ELA and math. We've seen some great gains in terms of our common planning time process, so we would love to have that in the, in the budget for next year. You notice collaboration and professional development, especially collaboration was mentioned quite a bit, probably for all three of the objectives, and ultimately is giving staff the time. And it's, you know, I have this conversation with Lisa and Laurie all the time about, in terms of giving staff the time, right, of having, whether it's certain substitutes in the building to take teachers off of duties in order to give them more time to plan and to do these things. And these are all things that we, you know, I outlined in our budget requests. The district has been, has been fantastic in terms of funding illustrious mathematics. In our ELA classrooms, each year, our reading libraries are growing, right? Where I want to say in the eight years I've been principal is, I don't think we've ever been, you know, denied a request for things like that. So those things that, you know, continue to expand, but obviously, you want to expand in those areas, where obviously, the cost of math materials are going to increase over the time. If you want to build your reading libraries, that increases. You know, we always look at, you know, staffing and things like that, but in this plan itself, there's a lot I feel we can do, what we've had currently in our budget, but finding ways on our own end to be creative, but having those coaching positions, I think would be, it'd be great for us moving forward if we could maintain, maintain those positions. And Mr. Kirby and Mrs. Carsley keep wanting to come back to work.
Thanks.
Hope that helps.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Barry?
Yes. So in my profession, we set similar goals. We use OKRs. I don't know if you're familiar, objectives, key results, and initiatives.
Yep.
And so to Mr. Luttrell's point, he's asking for measurable results. And what I've found with OKRs in general is that you have your key initiatives. I'm sorry, you have your initiatives, and you have, so you have your objectives, your key initiatives. Like, you know, what do you want to achieve? What are the steps you're going to get to take there? And how do you know you're succeeding? And oftentimes, the results aren't a number, but it's, to your point, it's, it's evidence. The results are evidence, right? And I think, to your point, it would be great to be able to see what are the results that you're hoping to report on? Like, what do those results look like? And it doesn't necessarily mean an MCAS score goes from, you know, you go from the 50th percentile to the 60th percentile, but could mean we had 20 kids that went through this program, and we saw that, you know, their grades improved or their overall engagement improved and stuff like that. So it could be, it doesn't have to be like hardcore, like black and white numbers. It could be, the key results could be, you know, more, I don't know, softer, I guess, you know?
Sure. So do you mind jumping back to the first objective, if you don't mind? So for example, in 1.1, examples of like what the evidence would look like would be maybe a summary of like classroom observations by administration, like what percentage of the observations have we done have been student-centered versus maybe teacher-led, right? Maybe it's, you know, showing our common planning time schedules from one year to the next, right? Like in 1.2, looking at improved reading and writing outcomes, it's internal assessment in our MCAS scores.
Yeah.
You know, so those are things that, not necessarily include in the plan, but, you know, maybe moving forward, we could, because I think all the principals could speak upon what the evidence would look like.
Yeah.
And it's very clear, and we lay that out the end of the year, when we assess it, you know, with our site council and with central office and school committee, I feel confident I could present, you know, the evidence that shows if we met the goal, made some progress, or did not meet the goal. Because I'll be honest, sometimes that does happen.
Yeah, and sometimes you can see it defined as like a, a green light, met goal, yellow light, working towards, and red, you know? It might be helpful to set it up that way, you know, for like a visual impact.
No, that could definitely work, because obviously, with us changing our templates, the template we used before, which was less detailed, you know, there was a very simple, if it was completed, ongoing, and whatnot. And I think we kind of wrap up at the end of next school year, we summarize this year's plan. I'm sure we could look at options of what that would look like to present to not just school committee, but the school community.
Yeah.
But I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yes.
Yeah, can I just want to underscore my fellow school committee members? I think demonstrable outcomes is really important, and it occurs to me, and this is just a rubric, sort of an issue with the rubric.
Okay.
We have action steps and then anticipated outcomes, but there's no assessment plan. So in other words, if I want to assess the reading and writing curriculum, okay, I want this to improve. I'm going to include, as it says here, scaffolded analytical writing units. Well, how am I going to assess, right? What kinds of evidence will prove to me that I've achieved that, right? So I, I hear you when you say you'll provide evidence, but I think that question of what counts as evidence actually needs to be asked at the beginning of the process, right? So what am I going to, what am I going to trust that will prove to me, right? And that, and I think that's a conversation, because I think some people would say, well, MCAS scores, but I don't think we all think that's the answer, right? I mean, maybe we want to assess some student papers, right? Maybe we want to look at student papers from the previous year. The, the, there's sort of, I think, this missing moment in these rubrics, which is, how do we assess? How do we even assess this, right? And so it's hard to present evidence if you don't even know what you're trying to prove.
So it's funny you bring that up in terms of, so today, Mrs. Carsley was asking to look at the writing of the fifth graders in terms of like any work. So she looked, she was looking at, say, for example, the fifth grade MCAS writing, right? So as they're working on improving writing at the grade six, seven, eight level, looking at like what it looks like coming in as a sixth grader and at the end of it. And like you said, it's like, there's only, and again, there's only so much you try to put in a plan without, you know, obviously, I don't want to say overwhelming the school community, but I would hope that in each one of those, there's obviously a process behind it that you could outline. And I think that would help kind of answer the question, other than just the pieces of evidence.
Actually, I have another one, and it's more of a wish list question, I think.
Okay.
And this is a bit of a kind of help us, help you issue, which is, what is it you can't do now? Because I agree, I think some of this is a matter of time and giving teachers more time, and that costs money. But, but, you know, I'm thinking about things like professional development that you'd want to do that we just, we can't do, we can't afford to do, or curriculum that you think would really help. You've spoken about ELA and math coaches. I get that. I'm just wondering, sort of, it's, I would almost say, please tell us more of what you need so that we can then make a better case for why you need these things.
Sure. But I would say first off, like I said, in the, in the eight years that I've worked as the principal, in terms of what we needed from, from the school committee, the town, central office, it's been fantastic, right? And obviously, now I think we're facing some challenging times, you know, with budgeting, which I think all districts are, with certain, some grant funding that will be, you know, going away, is, again, just looking at the budget when it gets, you know, presented to the school committee. And Superintendent Howe has always mentioned that, like, you know, it kind of tells a story of what, what we're looking for, right? And then if we don't get certain things, you know, I'll submit the same things every school year, because I feel like, you know, for us to have our students have the best education possible, there's certain things, you know, I'm very, I want to have in place at our school. So in terms of specific things, I'd probably have to sit down and kind of take a, take a look at it in more detail. But I would definitely highlight, you know, the request that's going to be in the budget for the school committee. We just recently submitted those, and I know that'll be presented at some point to the school committee. And we'll just keep advocating, but obviously, I can follow, if you want to reach out another time, Suzanne, I can take some time to process, and we can definitely have a conversation about that. Thank you.
Following up on that comment, I think one of the reasons why we wanted to do these earlier was that so we could have this more closely tied with budget, so that would be very helpful to have that link. I have a question for you on the assessment from last year. So this is what we have going forward. When you were looking back at the last year, is there any particular success that you saw that you'd like to highlight in any particular area in which you were not able to achieve what you had hoped?
Sure. Number one, I would say the implementation of illustrious math in grade six. It went very well. We had the flexibility before we implemented to go down to the ATC and observe a couple of classrooms and working with, and communicating with the staff at the ATC to understand like, you know, the pros and the cons, and see what the challenges would be maybe at our school level. And then after that, making the decision of, all right, let's just try sixth grade and see how it goes. Because I'm a firm believer with initiatives. Everything looks good on paper. Somebody can come and try to sell you something, and everything sounds great. And if you have that, you know, hate to say that warm and fuzzy feeling, you want to, instead of jump right in, I'm still a firm believer of trying it with a certain group, especially your staff, who will put it in with fidelity. And if you have success, then you move forward. And I think that's the best way to implement things. You know, some, don't get me wrong, sometimes some initiatives, you want to do all three grade levels or whatever the case is. But sometimes, I think slow and steady wins the race.
Definitely. Thank you. Did you have a question?
Well, I was going to say, working in a public school district, one thing I've always struggled with is that when we write goals for our students, when they have individualized education plans, the, the goals always have to be specific and measurable and attainable and timely and relevant. And when professionals have to, like the teachers have to write their goals, they also have to be those five things. And then we look at like what the organization is, and then we kind of like lose that restriction. And I have always thought that we should, like, hold the organization to the same standards that we hold our students and staff to.
Sure.
So I've always kind of had a gripe with that, so I would love to see going forward if we could be a little bit more, kind of just to, I guess, mimic what everyone else has said. And even if it's not within the goal, maybe in the action steps, like in the how part, like specifically how we're going to move forward with certain things. And I think that will also tie more into specificity about like increased budgetary needs. I think it'll be, give us a lot more information. But this is great, so thank you.
And to follow up to that is, so the last slide that Mr. Crombie will speak about is, one of our goals is, obviously, we have our strategic plan for the district that aligns to our school improvement plans. And the goal is, when our teachers write their professional practices to learning goals in September, is that they'll align, obviously, you know, they have, you know, two goals, and they'll align to somewhere within our plan, because that's going to help us move forward, so it's a whole school effort. Versus the site council and certain staff, we want to try to have that whole school approach.
Right. Cool.
Yes, Ms. Barry?
How has that pilot program been going with the S3, the Whole Child Review?
It's a lot of work, but it's been super beneficial. The group of 25 we did last year, it was working with the S3. It was working through how you make it work for your school, because I think it looks different at each grade level. And now this year, we're working with the entire seventh grade, I should say, just one team in terms of, you know, what it looks like for a year-long process, so we can make it, extend it out to more students and eventually the whole school. Is you get a picture and you realize, you review every student, and some students, you spend more time than others. But the ultimate goal is, I think you get a better picture of who the whole child is from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And sometimes, the middle school looks a lot different in grade six, seven, and eights. But the goal is, you know, when they move from one grade to the next, eventually move to the high school, is you hope that they're in a better place academically, but also socially and emotionally.
And I think key to that is, with the S3 program, is having the data ongoing as opposed to losing it in the mix between grade levels or between school levels. So having access to that data for a new teacher who doesn't have to spend an inordinate amount of time getting to know a student, but they have a, a general picture of what to focus on, um, what that student's needs are, may be pleasantly surprised at the end of the year that certain things are not, no longer necessary for that student when they, you know, mature a little bit over the summer. And that's been a big missing piece for us. We've done a lot of work on, on conversations as kids transition and making sure we're not having kids fall through the gaps or not challenging kids who need to be challenged more. But I think this puts it into the perspective, sort of, of the expectation that every teacher should know about every child that they receive and send. And, and have really good information. Some kids might have a ton of information, some kids may have less. But having access to that, I think, is gonna, you know, be a game changer. And these questions are great, um, the recommendations and the suggestions. We really, um, spent a lot of time, over the summer and at the beginning of the school year, looking at school improvement plant, plans of multiple districts. There's no reason to really recreate the wheel, but you have to look at so many different templates to see. We knew ours was not strong enough for our administrative team, we felt like we were missing some things. So the feedback from the committee is, is really, really solid, because it helps us tweak this process even more and, and continue to make sure that it is aligned, like Brian was saying. You're starting with our school district strategic plan, which will be redone over this summer. But tying everything together from the strategic plan to the school improvement plans to, you know, admin goals, to teacher goals, and then down the line to our S3, you know, student improvement goals, uh, is going to be huge. It's timely. I mean, it takes time to get all of this done, but, um, the feedback is, um, well-received and, and we're grateful for that.
Okay.
And now, I'll hand it off to Mr. Currie.
Thank you, Mr. Currie, um, and thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight to discuss Winter High School's, uh, improvement plan and our goals. And thank you for using up all your questions on Mr. Currie. I was listening to all of them. And I, and I do think it's important to mention that, uh, we have done a lot of work, uh, in the past, this past school year on the template and the way that we're writing these goals. And, um, I, I think the, the feedback that we're getting tonight is gonna, you know, help us shape a, you know, shape our templates for next year and our goals to be a little bit more, um, we'll say, um, specific and precise. So, um, I'd also like to take a moment to recognize, uh, the Winter High School's, uh, school site council, which is made up of administration, faculty, staff, and students. At the high school, we're lucky enough to have students participate in the, in the, in the, in the, uh, planning of, of our goals. And that's, uh, kind of exciting, and it's, it's a pretty fun collaborative experience, uh, to work and hear from our students. So I thank them for their help with this process. Our first two level-based goals under District Objective Number One are centered around the continuation of the ongoing UBD curriculum work that we have going on at Winter High School. Uh, we've, we've completed our UBD units in all core subject areas, and we're now currently working on designing unit plans for our elective courses. Uh, we're scheduled to complete this work by the end of the school year, but we still need to finalize our digital curriculum library in the form of a Google site, and, uh, which will allow for parents, students, and teachers, and all stakeholders to access curriculum documents for each and every course at Winter High School. In addition, we need to schedule curriculum check-in points throughout the, uh, upcoming school year to review and update these documents as needed. So with the UBD curriculum work, um, it's never really done. It's kind of, uh, evolving as, as the, as the years go by and as, um, best practices change and, and things of that nature. So, uh, that's something that we're gonna be, continue to be focused on. Our third level-based goal under District Objective Number One focuses on increasing professional collaboration opportunities for faculty to improve their consistency of, consistency of practice, to discuss curriculum design and, uh, general academic expectations. Uh, this includes vertical and horizontal alignment. So Brian had, had touched on this, uh, in terms of, um, the, uh, alignment across all grade levels and making sure that our collabora, uh, collaboration, uh, happens with, um, kind of like that end goal in mind, what our graduating senior looks like, what is supposed to look like, and then working our way backwards. The fourth level-based goal under District Objective Number One focuses on the creation and implementation of a grade nine transition team. Uh, the team will develop and focus areas and action steps that will help all students make a successful transition to the high school academic setting. This is, uh, kind of an exciting one for us, our, our school improvement, um, our school site council team was very excited about, about getting this up and running. We know that, um, making the jump from eighth grade to ninth grade, uh, is considerable, uh, for, for our students. And, um, mainly on the academic side, there's a lot of challenges that kids face. And I think we, we could do a, a better job of focusing on that, uh, coming up with, uh, areas that we know we need to improve on and making sure that our team, uh, has some goals in place to make that transition easier for our grade nine students. The grade, uh, ninth grade in high school is very critical year, obviously, you kind of set the tone for what the remainder of high school looks like. And for some of our struggling students, um, if they fall behind that year, it can take them further away from graduating. So, definitely a, a critical goal for us. The first level-based goal under District Objective Number Two focuses on the implementation of COTAC classes in all major content areas in grades nine and 10. We'd like to increase the level of support and instruction that our students receive in the classroom by providing them with both content area specialist teacher as well as a special education teacher. We do currently have, uh, many COTACs available at Winter High School, but we want to make that across the board in, in all content areas in grades nine and 10. That, uh, additional support and, um, specially-designed instruction through a special educator in the general education setting is beneficial to our students and, and obviously helps with the, the teacher-student ratio. So, that's always important for us. Again, we do have a lot of COTACs in place, but we want to make sure that every single class in the ninth, tenth grade has at least one of those COTACs. The second, uh, level-based goal under District Objective Number Two focuses on the implementation of the Winter High School Academic Support Center. So this center will be open three to four days a week after school in the high school library, and will provide all Winter High School students access to peer tutoring, study groups, and academic coaching. The, with the High School Academic Support Center is, we're kind of piloting in the, this year. We have some teachers that have, um, got this up and running, but this is something that we're way overdue, having it with the High School's support, as a support for students. Uh, right now, students can access teachers after school between 2:00 and 2:25 to get, uh, additional support for them. But outside of that, we don't have, uh, until now, we haven't had any, like, real formal peer tutoring set up. But this academic support center is, we're trying to, um, make it more like a, um, you know, a place not only where kids can get tutoring, but also, uh, have access to different study groups for different classes. Just provide a, a quiet space for students to sit down and do their homework, and then also receive academic coaching from the, the, um, the teachers that are on duty at the academic, academic support center. So, um, that's another, uh, another goal that we had that our school site council was very excited about, especially our students. A lot of our students are really interested in peer tutoring, being the tutors, which is, which is great. And, and, um, a lot of our students recognize that, uh, that's very helpful to them to, to learn from their peers in like a setting that's outside of, of the classroom. And that's something that we plan to have open and available to everyone after school for free. We're really excited about rolling that out. The third level-based goal under District Objective Number Two is centered around enhancing communication with all WHS stakeholders. Each year, it's important for us to review our current communication strategies and make necessary changes based on the evolving technology and programs that we have available to us. I know as we roll out a new, uh, student information system next year, which is gonna be Power School, it's imperative that we plan for onboarding parents and students to the Power School portal so that they understand how to, uh, how they can communicate with, uh, how the school communicate with them, how they can communicate with the school and have access to their students', uh, progress updates in their classes. Communication is something that has always, is always pops up somewhere in our school improvement plans, because we know how important it is to make sure that we're, um, we're communicating and parents know, uh, how they can receive information from the school and how they can get in touch with us. The first level-based goal under District Objective Three is centered around providing high-quality professional development for staff that is aligned with both their individual and department needs, as well as the school and district goals. PD offerings will be determined, uh, by input from staff, lead teachers, as well as staff via survey. So I know Brian had mentioned this specifically, that, uh, the professional development that, uh, is teacher-driven and sometimes teacher-led is, is, is very valuable, and we do have, uh, a lot of experts in our district and in our school. So just taking a moment to think about and strategize our professional development for the upcoming school year and making sure that it, it is, um, you know, it ties to the needs of our teachers and our students very specifically is something that we know that we need to work on. And the second level-based goal under our District Three objective focuses on strengthening partnerships with WHS parents and families in the Winter High School community. We would like to develop and host new parent and family events at Winter High School, as well as enhance some of our traditional annual events. So, uh, we have typical events at Winter High School that we hold every year, our college fair, our curriculum night, you know, nights when we invite the community into our building. Those nights, I think, could use, uh, a refresh, uh, in the format that we roll out and, um, kind of like the effort and strategy that we put into them. In addition to that, we want, definitely, uh, we want to do more to reach out to our newcomer families in, in the ways of, uh, a school orientation at the beginning and then some kind of, um, you know, cultural celebration towards the end of the school year. So those are things that, um, our team thought was, you know, important to do, and those are the things we'll be focusing on uh, as we move into, uh, next school year. And we do find, and this is kind of like silly to say, but we find that just scheduling ahead of time, you know, creates that fine deadline, so then it makes it easier to actually plan for it than it does to, uh, you know, once they're scheduled, it, it's easy to rally the team around getting everyone moving forward, so. And lastly, the third level-based goal under District Objective Number Three focuses on enhancing the teacher evaluation process to best support effective, effective teaching. We'll be focusing on developing WHS internal evaluation procedures and timelines that will support admin in identifying, discussing current best practices, as well as providing teachers with consistent feedback. And so, you know, there's a, uh, a, a very specific evaluation process in time, and that's laid out for us. But we wanted to spend more time as a, as an admin team focusing on, uh, what works for us in Winter High School and how we can do a better job internally evaluating our teachers. Which, really, for us consists of establishing, you know, clear, clearer, more clear procedures, protocols for evaluating, and kind of like advanced timelines, um, for the evaluations in addition to, um, more focused meetings among the admin to discuss the process, what we're seeing, kind of calibrate our feedback so that, and our responses to teachers. Obviously with the end result of, of, um, you know, improving instruction in the classroom. What will the Winter High School and middle school put in place to help meet our level-based goals? Brian and I, uh, Brian had talked about this, but, um, you know, we have all these goals, uh, in place, and so we're working to complete the action steps in the school improvement plan. Our site councils will create, uh, a process to review our level-based goals throughout the school year next year. And our staff will create student learning professional practice goals that align with the school improvement plan. And we will share out a snapshot at the end of the school year that will provide a summary of the goals that were met, not met, and ongoing. And I think that this more advanced timeline that we're on for breaking this down to the committee will ensure that that process happens, um, a little bit more, with a little more organization next year. So.
Fantastic questions.
Questions.
Mr. Luttrell.
I don't wanna, you're gonna feel bad that we're not gonna ask you any questions.
Sure he's awesome.
Ask as many as you want.
A few, and, you know, similar with the, um, try to measure in goals. But I would like to see, you know, just picking specific things, some, some, I think there's opportunities with AP testing and stuff like that. I think it'd be great to see, uh, some focus put on that, either reduce class size or whatever it happens to be. But to maybe enhance the outcomes of that a little bit, more of a comment. Budget, I would like to ask you two about, you know, the school committee has a habit over several years of quoting a, a, a needs-based budget, right? Say one, what's the best for the students. But it very rarely happens, right? So, I'd like every other principal is to be able to quantify what you can really do with a needs-based budget. What that potential money would do for you, how it would, you know, again, quantify that in a way that this is what we can do. And I'm just gonna ask a couple at once, then you could just make comments. Quick question on, you know, I think a lot of people, when they say, oh, we've had additional students in the, in the system, you know, I think right away, you know, it's grades one, two, three. I just want to know, have, has your student population changed from September 1st to now? That's a quick, easy question.
Yes.
It has. So, increased students?
Uh, yes, but it's, it's funny, it was, as I'm watching the trends go, we, we were increasing students all year. And then, um, probably about a, a month or two into the second half of the school year, we're starting to see a little bit of a drop. Now, the drop doesn't get us back to where we were at the beginning of the school year, but we are noticing more people leaving.
And what, and maybe explain why they're, why you're seeing a drop, um, based on sort of the due diligence and the, the work that's being done at multiple levels around, um, residency and supporting families that are, that are in need. Never in, in all my time here have I seen the collaborative effort of principals and the administrative teams really focused in, and part of it speaks to how, um, there's a more intimate connection with kids and that we've really been pushing that as a leadership team to really be involved with our students and our families. And following up, a lot of, and many of the time, it's, it's about the need of that family, so following up to check in. Do you still have what you need? How are things going at home? Do you have the supplies, materials you need? And oftentimes, we find that kids have moved and they have left the community, but they haven't necessarily informed us. And that's a very, very hard, um, and, and sometimes sad conversation that we have to have with our families. But I think that, that schools themselves are feeling the heat of the larger amount of students that we've had coming in. Certainly, we have students, you know, with varying needs that come into our school districts, into our school district. And I think that because the administrative team has been so intimately involved with that, people, people are having a hard time staying here if they don't really live here, because they're sort of exposed based on our, you know, wanting to make sure kids are okay. So I think you're seeing a, a lot of families that have come into the district this year and have not had secured housing and have had doubled-up housing, uh, and have been staying with families until they're able to get secured housing. They then get secured housing, sometimes they let us know, sometimes they don't, depending upon the distance. And so I think that's why you're seeing sort of this ebb and flow. If the conversations hadn't been happening, the staff hasn't been, if the staff hadn't been, uh, involved in creating a welcoming environment for kids by speaking with families and parents and getting students what they need, I don't know that you would have seen the shift down, um, in students. Because if we don't pay attention to those things, we don't really know about kids, and we don't know if they've moved or not. So it's a good thing and a bad thing. You know, it's a very difficult, um, it's a very difficult topic for us to handle. But we do have to stay focused on it, based on, you know, our enrollment and our capacity in the schools.
It seems like there's a lot of families that are just, generally speaking, more families are in transition.
Yeah.
Than we've seen before, for a lot of different reasons. So it's, you have like, Ms. Howard said, it's never ideal to pull a kid and that's, you know, 75% of the way through a school year and move them. But that's happening, we're just seeing more.
And, and my last point, and then you can just make comments on, we're so fortunate in Winter to have three relatively new schools, right? Within 20, 22 years, we have three brand-new buildings. However, do you see, you know, this goes back even to AP, but do you see, and do you feel any space restrictions in your school now, in the high school?
Well, I think, uh, our enrollment, like, right now is at 600. And we've always been between 580 and 600 since we've been in the new school. And I think, once you start getting, um, you know, to 610, 620, you definitely notice that you were running out of desks in certain classes. That's not necessarily an indication that they can't fit in the school, it's just an indication that, um, some spaces in the, some individual spaces in the building, based on where kids are being placed, are over capacity. But I, I don't think we're, we're, we're too far away from feeling like a little bit like we're, we're gonna be full. If that makes sense. I mean, I can't get you down to like the number, but we've never seen more than, in the last couple of years, we haven't seen more than 610. Uh, but our cafeteria is tight with the kids that we have, our classrooms are tight. Um, but our cafeteria is tight with the kids that we have. Our classrooms are tight, um, with, you know, twenty-five desks in them.
And I, I think it's an important point to remember because not all people think this way. That the capacity of a school, the number that goes on a plate that gets stuck up on a wall is the number of people that can fit in that building according to way, the way the building was built. What it doesn't speak to is what's happening in the building in terms of the classrooms themselves. And how many students are in a classroom. So if you count the total number of classrooms and then programmatically you look at what you have to provide for students. There are some classrooms, especially at the elementary, certainly at the middle school and high school, that are programs that have maybe eight students in them. They certainly could fit twenty-five kids in the room. However, the program itself eh, has eight students in it because maybe it's a special education program, maybe it's an E L L classroom. So you, you, you can't really just look at that number. I think it's important to look at the utilization of the space. And are we able to handle the total number of students programmatically that we have versus just a solid number? Just throwing that out there.
But that's it. If you just wanna comment on budget, I guess.
Yes. Before I do that, I just wanna say, uh, going back to the A P. And I guess this is more just a general comment for the school improvement plans, but when we outline our goals, uh, for the school year and we're doing so with our school site council, it doesn't mean that, um, within our own schools and within our departments that there aren't other goals and focus areas for us. There's a, there's a lot more, um, we'll say specific goals with specific outcomes, um, that happen within, uh, department level teams. Just, uh, just talking about our A P, um, scores, like, you know, we have a, we have a group of A P teachers that meet on a routine basis to discuss our scores and ways to improve and what our programs look like, what our enrollment looks like and how we want it to look. You know, kind of along lines of what you're saying, it's just not, um, it's not aligned in our school, uh, improvement plan because we can't put everything in there. So those conversations are happening, um, within our, on our teams. Uh, and budget wise. I'm just gonna pull up what I wrote. Um, it, it certainly is something where, um, specific to this school improvement plan, I know that we're gonna be looking for more stipend, uh, stipend opportunities for our academic support center. Um, in order for us to staff that, that's like a new thing for us, in order for us to staff that next year. We're gonna need some, to have teachers in there. And to the time that we wanna do it, obviously, a, a little bit later into the afternoon to give kids time to get in there and, you know, get the tutoring and, um, get the support that they need. So, uh, looking for money around staffing that is gonna be something that we included in our budget proposal to Ms. Howard. The addition of Power School, which I know isn't like a budget item at this particular moment, or we're getting it.
It will be.
But that's, that, that's like a, that's gonna be a huge game changer for, I think for the district, but I can speak to high school, that's gonna be a big deal for us. So having that in place is, is definitely just a, a positive in terms of support that we're getting. And then, um, maintaining current staff that we have is critical. I mean, we can't, we can't lose anybody, uh, definitely, but always, um, looking towards, um, adding a body. Well, um, in, uh, it's funny the way that the, the numbers come to us, that the incoming freshman is a smaller class. Uh, but our sophomore class is like, you know, a huge bubble. And so it's hard to say that I need an E L A teacher because I don't know if that's where the bubble's gonna be. So I have to kind of follow that bouncing ball a little bit. Uh, but just the, the body itself, a position, always looking for an additional person. I'm not, not sure how likely that is. Um, but then, um, and then I, I guess like more of a long-term thing is we're always looking for, to make sure that we, uh, have money to continually fund our one-to-one initiative with our Chromebooks. And so that's, everything we do is central to, um, you know, students having Chromebooks. And we're, we're in a good place now, but I'm always trying to forecast down the line when the machines, um, you know, need updating. Uh, and we wanna make sure that we're always, we're never in a place where we don't have, um, computers for kids. Uh, and we've done pretty good with that, but that's just something that I think is always hanging out there, our, our tech needs in the, in the, in the area of Chromebooks.
Yes, Ms. Berry.
Um, I just wanna give huge props to a couple of the, um, elements on your plan. The first in particular is the, um, ninth grade transition program. I, I know that's like literally the reason why I'm on the school committee because my daughter had such a hard transition from middle school to high school. So to be able to see that come to fruition, I think is huge. I think it's such a huge adjustment for kids when they go from middle school where it's team teaching to the high school where they're switching classes and, you know, they don't have a team of teachers on them at all times. I think that that's really critical. And I also am really impressed with the after-school academic support program being built. I think that's huge. I mean, these teachers do such a great job trying to help kids after school, but they only have twenty-five minutes. And if you have ten kids who need help on a math problem, they're not gonna get, you know, get that help. So, um, I think that's awesome also.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, Mr. Purinton.
Thank you for putting this all together. Uh, and just like we were talking about with Mr. Curley. How, how do you plan on take, getting like, setting up your baseline and then measuring your goals?
Sure. So, you know, in anticipation of, of, um, when I was meeting with committee and just anticipation of like these kinds of questions, you know. We've looked at, all of the goals are different in, in the ways that we can measure them. Um, just not that I wanna go back, that, I don't know if you need me to go back through each and every one of them. But, um, you know, in terms of like the academic support center in the, in the grade nine transition team. Speaking, I guess, about the, uh, grade nine transition team, you know, an easy way for us to collect some data on that and to measure the effectiveness of, of the transition team could be to look at our retention rates at the end of the school year, using this year as, as a baseline. And then see where we're at, um, the following year, cause that's, you know, one of the things that we're driving at is to make sure none of these kids failed freshman year and that they were all moving on to the tenth grade. So that's just, that's one way. I mean, other things that we can do at the high school. That we're fortunate, we can do that maybe at the other schools they don't, they can't do as easily as, um, you know, these, these, uh, formal and informal assessments, the grades, the report cards. The, um, the failure list we can run, uh, who's on high honor roll, who's not, how many kids, like that kind of thing we can always look at and tie it back to, um, the ninth grade transition team, the academic support center, who's participating in that? Where were they grade-wise before they started participation and where were they at afterwards? And then, um, more so some of the stuff like Mr. Curley said that we're creating, which would be, um, when we look at, um, uh, increased professional development. You know, our, our administrative evaluation process. A lot of that's just gonna come down to, you know, what kind of documents can we produce that are gonna be evidence that, you know, we've worked on this and we've carried it out. And there's, there's something in place. Hope that helps a little bit.
It, it does. No, there, so there is a, you have thought about how you are going to measure it. So, excellent.
And all of it, I think, uh, as, as I was going through that process, that thought process. Everything that's in the plan ties loose, you know, from an overarching standpoint to student achievement, right? And so sometimes it's hard to correlate the data with the, with the goal. But everything that you're doing is, um, done with the intention of bringing up student achievement, which can be measured, especially at the high school level. A lot of ways through our, you know, our state assessments, our internal assessments, our quarterly, um, exams, our midterm exams, like things like that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I just, uh, wanted to join, um, Ms. Berry and say thank you for the concrete examples of the, um, uh, academic support center and the ninth grade transition team. And I was, I was really interested in this one about co-taught classes.
Yes.
And it, its placement sort of under social and emotional learning. And just wondering if you could talk just a little bit more about what that program looks like. I thought that was really exciting. And the one thing I think all three of these seem to have in common is recognizing an area, like a, a moment of need, right? And then thinking in some creative and, um, creative and innovative ways about answering that need. And I suspect that the co-taught classes are in that same vein, but I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. So our, um, our, our college prep level, um, classes across the board consists of, um, you know, a lot of different types of learners. And so there, uh, you have everything from, um, students that are, you know, more high achieving. All the way down to students who might be a little bit unmotivated and have learning challenges, um, both or one. Um, and then kind of like everyone in between. And so, um, we're always looking for ways to strengthen those college prep level classes and the instructions that, that is taking place in those classes. We know that, we know what we do well and we know our high achieving students do well every year. And we know that, um, we have strong programming for them. And so those college prep level classes have always been, uh, a focus of ours. And so by adding an, an additional teacher, um, you're, you're, you know, you're providing, like I had said before, content specialists, whether it be math or E L A, um, there who maybe generally provides most of the instruction. And you have the support of a, a special education teacher who, who specializes in specially designed instruction. Who can go around and work not only with special ed kids, but some students who maybe don't, aren't, don't qualify for special ed, but are on a five oh four plan or just, you know, struggling kiddos who, you know, need a little support and need a different, um, a different type of instruction. And so we found that to be incredibly successful over the past couple of years. And we've seen the results of that through our, uh, high need students on M C A S where those, those scores. When we spoke earlier in the year, those scores were up considerably from last year, our high needs population. And that's a lot of the kids that are in, um, those college prep level classes. And, you know, there's, there's a, uh, the, the college prep level classes follow the same curriculum. They take the same assessments. They, they follow the same year-long plan as the honors level classes. But there's just more support and that ratio of students to teachers, uh, is better for them. So.
I think too, Matt, with, with a special educator in the classroom, like Matt pointed out, it doesn't necessarily mean that that particular person is focused just on students who have actual contracts, uh, written I E Ps. Um, as a former co-teacher way, way, way back in the day, um, co-teaching biology, which I low-key did not do well in when I was a high school student at Wentup High School. Um, but I learned to go into that classroom and be the process person or the, the super student. The one that didn't, wasn't afraid to raise the hand and ask the question. And typically with a co-teacher, that co-teacher has in their brain the same question that thirty percent of the classroom has. But won't, won't raise their hand, especially at the high school level, and won't speak up that they don't understand what's going on. And a co-teacher in the classroom can move about the classroom and be able to give a different process to an individual student based on that student's sort of profile or presentation. And I also think critical is the, the social emotional support system when there are two adults and four sets of eyes, two sets of eyes in a classroom to be able to manage a room. And if you've ever watched a, a co-teaching environment and it's, it's pretty interesting in the classroom to see how the two people navigate the classroom. And they don't, one doesn't sit, stand and the other one sits. It's typically rotating the room directly across from each other with an understanding that they're looking at different things. But the students also understand that the behavior management in the classroom is typically, eh, vastly improved with two people in the room. If the co-teach taught environment is a co-teaching marriage. There are some disastrous co-teaching marriages that end in divorce. And we at the administrative level are very much aware. But it doesn't stop just within that classroom. So there's, there's co-teaching planning and conversations that go on that open the eyes of a general educator who may not have ever thought about, hey gee, I can actually assess that child verbally and it's still the same. I'm gonna get the same result, but if I ask that child to do it on paper, that child's not gonna achieve. So just giving little tricks of the trade like that, um, create a much more, uh, user-friendly environment, but a much more supportive environment for all students. And again, eh, being a special educator doesn't mean you're just focused in on students who have, you know, uh, contracted employment with the school.
That sounds amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hearing none. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate that. And we look forward to checking back with you on the budget updates.
Sure. Thank you so much. Thank you, Bob.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March eleventh?
Motion.
Second.
Question by Mr. Purinton, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion?
Hi, guys.
Hearing none. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
Abstained.
One abstention. Motion passes. May I have a motion for warrant S P W twenty-four dash fifteen in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy cents?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for budget transfers in the amount of seven thousand dollars and three thousand, seven hundred dollars?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Mr. Lutteiri. And, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Since this is money, we will do a voice, I mean, a roll call, please.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Okay, I've, um, buildings and grounds, I'm gonna ask for a motion for the William P. Gorman Fort Banks P T O Spring Social and the ice cream social together.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes. Friends of Winthrop Beach have requested, um, space for a short talk with Dr. Gregory, Gregory Skomel and a request to waive the fee. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none. Motion passes. The Winthrop Police Department has requested use of space for their lieutenant exams. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Hearing none. Motion passes. Winarc has requested for special Olympics, uh, space, use of space and a request to waive the fee.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none. Motion passes. Subcommittee reports, do we have a policy?
We sure do. Um, so we had a subcommittee policy meeting today before this meeting at five, um, with myself, Ms. Petrie and, um, Ms. Leonard. And, um, we went through two sections, section C and D of the, um, policy book. Um, and I'm, would like to make a, uh, we'd like to ask for a motion to approve section C and D. And I'll just go through a couple of, um, small tweaks. In most cases, um, we are accepting what the M A S C provides to us as the, um, best case, uh, or I should say, um.
Recommended policy.
Yes, recommended policy. Thank you. Um, and so we've adopted M A S Cs where, um, there was a difference. In some cases, they were the same. Um, in some cases, we've added a line or two from, from M A S Cs to ours. So just real quick, in section C, C A, admin, this was all based on, yeah?
Hold on. Uh, make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Section C and D.
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Petrie. Now discuss.
Okay, sorry. So, um, section C is general school admin. Around administrative goals, we're keeping ours instead of adopting M A S Cs. I think it was just a little bit, uh, more district centric. Uh, section C H C A, which was based on the approval of handbooks and directives, we're accepting the M A S C version except we're keeping the date of April thirtieth, um, for submission, uh, for, um, Wentup High School's handbook. Um, so we're just adding that date line. Uh, section C E was the administrative council cabinets and committees. We're keeping Wentup's version because it, um, it cross-references the other policies that are relevant. Um, in section, and it, eh, again, unless otherwise stated, we're accepting the M A S Cs recommendations. Uh, section D, which was around fiscal management, um, D G A, D G A, um, authorized signatures. We're keeping the Wentup policy as it gives us more leeway for the process of authorizing expense warrants should somebody not be present. Um, D J E, we're going to wait until the inspector general's office has updated their regulations. This was at the recommendation of M A S C. And D K, we're keeping Winthrop's policy around adding, um, what was D K? Sorry. I don't have the.
You haven't memorized every page.
I have, I, I was taking notes. This is around payment procedures. So we're keeping Wentup's policy, um, and adding cross-references to the other policies and a line from M A S Cs version regarding actual invoices, statements and vouchers, um, that will be available for inspection by the school committee upon our request. So it just gives us the ability to have that in writing that we can request them. So that's that. So, um, yeah.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote on the motion?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
I have a quick report tonight because I know we still have a, a lot to get through. Um, to start, I just wanna thank, you know, uh, Mr. Crombie and Mr. Curly, uh, for their efforts tonight. We, we really took into consideration what the school committee had presented to us before. Um, spent a lot of time, as I stated before, looking at different plans and really wanting to put something out that was user-friendly for the committee, um, but also for the parents. Um, I think this is a huge step. This is very different than the way we've done them before, uh, much earlier in the school year. Be able to incorporate a lot of the suggestions and recommendations. Um, I'm sure the other two principals who are, have, uh, watched tonight so that they'll be ready for you as well. Um, but there was a lot of time and effort put into this, um, and a really good focus on behalf of the principal. So I wanna thank them for that as well as, as Lori. Um, just one quick, um, two quick little updates. Last day of school is now June twelfth. I just want people to remember that due to my, uh, rain day and, uh, spring recess is coming up. So April fifteenth to the nineteenth, for families to remember that. Um, we'll talk about the school calendar, uh, towards the end of the meeting. Um, I think, I just, the, the last thing I wanted to let folks know is I had the opportunity, um, this past Thursday. Uh, we cosponsored, uh, the Stop Bro- Stop and Block Conversation for caregivers. Um, this is something that, uh, we work with the DA's office and Jackie Lamont on. It's all around social media and what's happening with, with children and families. It was an adult-only presentation. Um, we spent a lot of time pushing it out. I'm sure if you have parents in the school, you probably saw it thirteen times come by and we had it on Facebook. The police department, um, the Winthrop Public Health Department, CASA, and, uh, obviously the school department worked together to make sure that we can get this information to our parents. I did, um, participate, there were only seventeen participants. So it was a little bit disappointing in terms of the total number of people participating, but I'll take seventeen, um, over none. Um, so I, uh, touch base with Jackie Lamont from the DA's office. Uh, she is gonna provide me with the slides that they went through. There was just some really, I, I mean, I was blown away by some of the information during the presentation about how to talk to kids. Um, sexting was a big thing. Sex extortion was a big topic. Again, this was an adult-driven, um, platform, but the amount of information that is out there that people don't realize is accessible and, and they're gonna get it to us in multiple languages. Um, and we are gonna push it out because, you know, I learned a ton and I find myself to be pretty savvy with, um, understanding the impacts of social media on children, not necessarily understanding how to navigate. But this also, this particular presentation gave links to ways for you as a parent. Number one, how to talk to your child without pushing your child away, which is a big one. But number two, about how, what the social media platforms are that are out there and how you can get on your own child's phone or device and help limit those. So there's just a wealth of information. So, uh, I wanna thank the DA's office. Jackie's great. She's always out here doing stuff with us. Um, but we'll get that, roll that out to parents pretty soon. Um, and then I will let us move on to the rest of the agenda items. I haven't, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Do we have any homeschool applications?
Yes, we actually do. And I have, um, I'm recommending that all be adopted. There are actually four new homeschool, um, one first grade, one sixth grade, one ninth grade and one eleventh grade. The eleventh grade may change later this week. They're requesting homeschooling right now on an online platform, but they have applied to Greenfield, which is the Massachusetts Virtual School. So if accepted to Greenfield, that would just be a transfer to, uh, enough, you know, online public schooling. But, um, they don't know if they're off the waitlist for that or yet not. So, so I, I reviewed all the plans and they're all, um, I would consider acceptable and recommend that you approve them.
And, and I'm sorry, tell me again, how many?
Four.
There are four. And I have a motion to, to approve the four requested homeschool applications.
Motion. Second.
By Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none. Motion passes. Uh, appointments, resignations, retirements and postings.
So no appointments, resignations or retirements at this point. Postings, we have a long-term substitute special education teacher at the middle school, a long-term substitute ESP at the middle school and a long-term sub, uh, at the Gorman Fort Banks. Those are maternity leaves or parental leaves.
Okay. The Student Opportunity Act approval.
So you all got copies of the little presentation, so I don't know if you wanna pull it up or not, but, um, I'm not gonna read it all to you, but the general idea is that when the student opportunity, when the chapter seventy funding was revisited and, um, recalculated, you know, there was a, a real investment made in education. With talents like Winthrop don't benefit as much as some of the larger areas and, um, so what the legislature's done is, is made it a law that every three years we have to update our Student Opportunity Act, um, plan as to what we're gonna be focusing on and what our targets will be. So we do not, you, you do not have to say how you're tying funds because for districts like us, it's not a real large impact on the funding. Um, so, but it is, is just to be driven by what the district needs currently. Um, right now, the, yeah, if you wanna pop that up, I'll just show you a couple, but, um, right now, the department has put out a document and I'll show it to you in a couple of minutes, but it's basically, you can keep going a little bit. It's basically just to say, you know, it doesn't matter where you live. You, you know, basically your zip code should not dictate, you know, how you're being educated. And that's the real reason for it. This is the piece about not having to tie it to it. You can keep going. Um, so it's, again, to focus on the subset of what our goals are, um, and what some of the areas of disparity are that we're seeing in the data that we're getting from the Department of Education. Again, you have to use the three-year, you have to use the targeted goals set by the Department of Education and ELA and mathematics as one of your measures. Uh, they will be looking at that as well. Um, and then you let them know what else you're going to be doing. So for us, um, focusing on our multilingual learners, student and family supports, um, is a big piece that we've been working on. We've used a lot of our S R funding, um, in order to try and get the parent information center up and running and to make that kind of more official, um, hopefully going into next year, uh, as well as the updates, the new student information system so that we can have better communication with our families, um, through that as, as well. There's a lot of different programming that's been happening for our multilingual families with our parent English classes. We, um, we average about anywhere from forty-five to fifty parents every week at the high school for the parent English classes. Um, we've also brought on like more specialized, um, folks to help with the students because we offer childcare and minimum is about fifteen students, fifteen kids i- on each of those nights that come to, um, with the parents. So, um, we've, you know, we've got different folks there to translate and help with multi-language because it's not just Spanish-speaking parents. You know, it's Arabic-speaking parents as well that are trying to learn English. So we have, um, we have a lot of supports in place for those. Uh, and also the work that we're doing with our LPAC, our English Learning, um, Parent Advisory Group. Um, you know, it's modeled much like the CPAC is, that they have, um, they bring up kind of questions and concerns that they have and we try and bring people in to talk to them about it, to help them. Uh, they've done a lot of work with, um, CASA as well, trying to integrate some of the supports that are here for them in town and Miamore. Um, they have also just, um, and I have to give the props to, um, Fabiola Olivera and the team that's been really our, our family liaisons. Um, they have, they've set up a, a program and, and with the support of CASA and, um, and the, um, la la la.
The.
No, but what's the?
Parent network?
Yeah, the parent network. Thank you. Couldn't get it out. Um, they're going to be running a program called Good Grief, um, in collaboration with the Boston Medical Center. And it's, it's really about the grief of, of what these families go through with immigrating to a new country. Um, the focusing on the supports and the losses that they're going through during this time. And it will be every Tuesday in the month of April. It'll be open to all the families and, um, you know, we will do the same thing. We will provide childcare and, um, I need a rebel was gracious enough to let us use their space. That's why I couldn't come up with a network, um, for the childcare piece. Um, they will, I think they're gonna be able to support up to thirty families, um, during the program. Um, and just to give them more resources and more connections and really, you know, let them know that they're, there's a focus on, on them as, you know, community members, you know? So that's a big piece of, one of the things that we're gonna be focusing on going forward. To continue the work, the district work on S three, um, that's Systemic Student Support Academy and that's what it stands for. Um, and that's the initiative that you've heard Brian and Matt talk about. Um, and it's really about the process of multi-tiered systems of support for every child and knowing that we're looking at every child going forward and, you know, over these next three years, really have these plans in place for every child in the district. Um, and then, um, launching targeted programmatic instructional supports for the students with a focus on those with disabilities, um, as the low-income students and students with disabilities make up the majority of our lowest twenty-five percent of students as identified by, um, the Department of Education. These are some of the data that Desi has put out and I know it's hard to read and that's why he gave you the packages. But you see down the bottom where it has, um, the bars with the darker maroon colors? Those are the areas of largest disparity. So our students with disabilities, um, also have a higher level of chronic absenteeism. Um, they, you know, we, our English learners have a higher level of suspension rates. And, um, and the low-income students, same thing. Out of school suspension rates are higher with some of them. So we're, we're trying to really focus on, like Bri- Mr. Curly said, like the whole child. Like looking at everything that's going into some of these numbers from the Department of Education and, and see if we can't be building more supports for kids all around. Um, but like I said, we will also be looking at the ELA and the math for the lowest performing because that's what they will be focusing on as well. And then providing additional supports in curriculum instruction and staffing to support our high-needs families within the district. Um, some of the community support and family engagement, um, that will all be rolling into this would be the community partnerships that we've been working on, the aligned objectives with, um, with not just the schools, but with the LPACs and the CPACs and making sure that, uh, that, that all the work is connected, really. You know, that nobody's a standalone group and started to try and tie things in because, because of what we're finding is our EL students, our students with disabilities and our low-income students, you're usually a member of two, at least two of those three, um, subgroups. So, um, really focusing on them as a collective goal, um, to pu- build in any support that we can. Um, enhancing parent involvement and then continuing to focus on culturally responsive teaching and making sure that, um, that that lens is, is being looked at in all the work that we're doing. All the UBD work that's being done at the high school, all the curriculum work that's being done at the other schools. Um, and then action steps for engagement, target, more targeted communication. Uh, like Mr. Crombie also said, they started, um, this past year with a separate parent evening for the non-English speaking families where we had interpreters and folks there to help them get set up on their, um, I pass parent portal accounts and really make sure they understood what curriculum night, what was being said at curriculum night in their own languages, um, and to know how to get involved, who to contact at the school if they had questions, uh, about things that are going on with their children and all. So really trying to be, you know, more, more focused on making sure that we're being inclusive in all of our practices. Um, they, you know, continue work with the parent advisory councils, um, and at the secondary level, really listening to more student voice and, and finding out what, you know, what kids are feeling, uh, you know, because we can ask at that level, right? And trying to implement that in some of our decisions going forward. And then hopefully getting our parent information center and access to resources up and running for all of them. Um, the big piece that the Student Opportunity Act is based on is evidence-based programs. So these, um, the Department of Education puts out the list of their evidence-based programs and these are the ones that fit with what our focus is. So the effective student support systems, the comprehensive tiered supports, um, diverse approaches to meaningful communication with students, families and valued partners, inclusive curriculum adoption process that we've been using and supporting of the curriculum implementation, uh, and a comprehensive approach to early literacy. Um, and then effective use of our WEDA frameworks, making sure that our teachers really understand and know what students can do at different levels based on their scores and, and really targeting academic support and acceleration for our kids. Um, and these is just some of the things that we have in place or will continue to have in place. The early literacy screeners that we use from Renaissance, um, STAR CBMs and Haggerty Phoenemic Awareness. Our new adoption of the aligned reading ELA curriculum for K to five and its implementation. Continued fidelity of implementation of the illustrative math, um, and the use of the Zern Math Platform that we use with it. Specially-designed intervention tools and specialized instruction for, uh, students with disabilities. English language curriculum tools, RIGER, you know, National Geographic and Elevation are programs that we use to, um, help, some parts of it are for curriculum pieces and the elevation is really about giving access to all teachers of where our English learner students, where our multilingual learners are and what they can do, as I was saying. Um, focusing on, on WEDA and the CANDU descriptors and then the systemic student supports and the MTSS process. So this is the plan that we, um, would like to put forward to the Department of Education. Um, they have a whole different, much more.
Comprehensive.
Database where it all has to be put in with a lot more supporting documentation. Um, and that will be my next step in finishing that, uh, report for the Department of Education.
For tonight, you're looking for a, an approval of this plan?
Approval of our plan going forward for the next three years around the Student Opportunity Act.
Okay, to kick off the discussion, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion?
Just wanna say thank you. This is an enormous amount of work. That's very clear. I know it's mandated, but thank you for the care.
It really is. It's great work and it, it's shared. So, you know, it's work that's shared by everybody at every level in every school. So that's, that's the part that's really great and, and I can't say enough, like I said, about, um, it, it's been great having, um, the, the family liaisons that we've been able to bring onboard to help with the parent information and to help with their, you know, with our families. And the S R funding to allow us to do these things, you know, has been really great. And that's why it's so important that we don't go backwards with some of these things, you know, when it comes to the, the budget piece and going forward over the next few years, uh, because it's making a real difference, a real difference. And, um, they're fabulous and they don't work eight to, you know, two-thirty. At six o'clock at night Saturdays, they're doing programs with surrounding communities. They're delivering food and they're finding couches and materials for families and they're just, they've just been fabulous. And they, they deserve a lot of credit for a lot of the, the great work that's been going on.
So this, this plan is tied into or picks off pieces from the school improvement plans?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's mo- it's, it's basically the legislator's way of saying, okay, we changed the chapter seventy fo- formula funding and so we wanna know that schools are focusing on disparities that are being seen and that there's always a plan to close some of these gaps. And they're not forcing anybody to tie particular funds to it. We still have to, in this big report, still identify about how much it's costing and where is it coming from? It's coming from the LEA budget, it's coming from S R three, it's coming from Title One, that kind of thing. It doesn't have to be tied to the SOA because a lot of districts don't get that much funding from the changed numbers. Um, but it is their way of saying, you're paying attention to what the data is saying about disparities in your district and you're trying to make, um, make improvements and show progress.
And, and with, with all due respect to the Department of Education and the change in the chapter seventy foundation formula, which is something that keeps me awake at night, it is still woefully inept.
Uh huh.
And it has not come close to catching up with the cost of education. And so we love doing this stuff because it makes, uh, it reminds us of the work that we are doing that we don't take the time to sit down and talk about, but it's an, it's annoying to have to tell the Department of Education for the additional fifty cents that they provided us. provided us with and of course it's more than that, but it is by no means funding education. And we see that here in Winthrop that the town cannot support the offset of the true cost of education and that that chapter seventy foundation formula is so very discrepant, it is not equal in every community and this amount of work is self-serving for us. I'd like to keep it with us. I'm not necessarily a fan of sharing it for the fifty cents, but we have to do that. But I, I really need to be clear that that chapter seventy foundation formula is still very, very broken.
Any further discussion? Here, can I have a, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any abstentions or opposition? Motion passes. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar, I see that we have two versions to consider.
Yes, yes. So the school, twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar, typically we meet with administration as well as the union. So the union has a stake in the collective bargaining in terms of their opinion of this, of the calendar for the year. So I've had some conversation with, with them about what our thoughts have been and have met with the administration and really gone over all the critical things that need to be in the calendar and all of the critical dates that we cannot have school, et cetera, et cetera. So I've put in front of you an option one and an option two and just to lightly go over it, option one has teachers starting Monday, August twenty-sixth and August twenty-seventh with no students. They do a full day of professional development on the first day, which they get all of their mandated trainings in that are required, sign off on those trainings. We have a, a platform that we now do interactive training with them, so it is much more interesting. The second day of their professional development is a continuation of the first plus a district-wide meeting as well as a union meeting and then teachers getting in their classrooms to be able to get their classrooms ready for when students would attend. So in option one, teachers come on Monday and Tuesday, students would start on Wednesday, full day and stay Wednesday and Thursday. And then Friday, August thirtieth would be a no-school day for anyone for the Labor Day weekend. So everyone would be off Friday, of course, Saturday, Sunday and Monday. And then everybody is back at it on September third, full tilt. Option two has teachers starting on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth for professional development and then not returning until September third. So they would come on the Wednesday and Thursday, I believe it is.
Yes.
Hold on, yep. They would come on the Wednesday and Thursday and then students and staff would return to start school on September third. That second option or second thought pushes the last day of school for students to June sixteenth. And if it snows out, as you can see from your calendar, the last day of school with five snow slash rain days would be June twenty-fourth. Principals feel like that is tight. Some of the opinions expressed in starting prior to Labor Day, which we have done now for several years in a row, is that we are front-loading education at the beginning of the school year when people are happy and excited to come back to school as opposed to adding extra days at the end of the year when everybody's ready to sort of run out the door. That has an impact on, certainly on the time spent on teaching and learning prior to MCAS for what that's worth, but really a focused, focus on learning. One other thing you will see in both option one and option two is additional half-days for professional development. We have collectively are asking or requesting the additional three half-days for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The focus of those half-days would be directly related to the S three work we talked about, which is super-time intensive to be able to have teachers sitting down and discussing the number of students as we're expanding our focus on not just a handful of students, but now hopefully half of the students that we have. So there would be three half-days focused on that as well as time if needed for the new ELA slash reading curriculum. So we would be going from five district-wide half-days to eight next year if accepted. And the elementary would continue to have six additional half-days for parent-teacher conferences and there would be the ongoing one full-day PD on voting day. And that's the five district partnership where we're gathering input from and have been from all the staff about what they want to see for professional development and that's the collaboration with the other five districts. Putting those two options out there, open for feedback. I've had quite a few calls from parents that are anxious trying to plan their summer vacation plans, so they're asking when that calendar will be solidified. So I bring it to you today and welcome any feedback.
Can I have a motion for either?
Motion for either and discussion.
I, I think I, did I say the principals were in favor of option one? That was their top choice. I don't know if I said that.
Okay, let's, let's start with that one. We can discuss and then we can have a, if we want to go in a different direction, we can do it as an amendment. So motion for option one. Put it on the table to discuss.
Oh, okay.
Second by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Leonard. All right, I will open this up to discussion. If somebody wants to have an amendment for number two, we could do that as well, but let's start out with discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have numbers on the number of absent students from the first two days of school this past school year? When it was the
Shockingly, not off the top of my head, but I can get that information for sure.
Good question.
I can definitely, I can definitely get it. Typically, the first day of school for students and staff is, is pretty full, but we can certainly look at that. Everybody's excited to come back.
I just want to see how many people skipped out on the first two days of school versus, you know, the last day of school for twenty twenty-five is a half-day Monday. I highly anticipate a number of people not showing up for that.
Yep. We can get that, I can bring that to the next meeting.
Okay.
This is completely anecdotal, but I think it's really nice for students to have two days back to kind of like learn where their classroom is, just reorient, then have a break and then come back sort of ready to go. It just feels more humane. Again, this is completely anecdotal, but it just feels like a much more like humane way to start the school year than just like Labor Day, boom.
That feedback has been shared by teachers that it's nice to get the students back and we have a lot of anxious kids, especially at the elementary level and sort of dripping them in a little bit and then giving them some time off and being excited to come back has been expressed by the teachers as well.
I was curious about the population that I tend to work with, with their, I'm, I'm sure their experience is a little bit different coming back to school for two days, then back home for four, then back to school for four and they don't actually have a full week of school until the third week. That sounds disruptive for the kids who, who thrive on structure and routine. I'm, I'm one of those people who thrives on instruction routine. That would be very disruptive for my learning.
Yes, Mr. McCurry.
Thank you for the time, obviously. Nothing's, you know, we think everything's kind of easy. Everything's a chore. And I, I think, and I wish I had said this earlier in the year, but looking at this year, Christmas is on a Wednesday. I think for a multitude of reasons, I'd like to see two full weeks off. New Year's Day is on a Wednesday, then they're back Thursday, Friday. So you could go to structure there also, I guess, but I'm looking economically too. It's the middle of the winter. It's a good time to have the opportunity to save a little on utility bills. It's a great opportunity for parents to spend more time with their kids or if they have vacations planned over the holidays. That would obviously throw two days back in. What I would suggest potentially would be to go to a half-a-day on the thirtieth, on the Friday before Labor Day and go to a half-a-day on Friday, June thirteenth and have a full day back on Thursday, the twelfth and end school on the thirteenth. A lot of districts, I think, do this or do different type vacations, I guess, in February or March break instead of February, April. I, I, I do like the February, April, but I think the opportunity to, I think everybody wins. I think the district wins on saving on utility costs. I think the parents win on having two full weeks. I mean, it's an opportunity that comes every six or seven years, I guess, depending on leap year or whatever, but just to throw it out there.
Ms. Berry.
Yeah, I think having, well, first of all, we're assuming that all parents are off during Christmas.
No, well, they're not off any time.
No, it is. And so that's two weeks of childcare.
Half-days all over the place here.
That's two weeks of childcare that people have to figure out. It's also two weeks that we don't have eyes on the most vulnerable students who might be food insecure and also who, you know, you know, may not have the best home life. So, you know, we, we need to keep eyes on, on these kids and to have them not in for two weeks straight, I think is, is, you know, maybe a frightening thought unless we plan on providing food for them. That's my concern and I also really struggle with adding even more half-days to the, to the schedule because I think that's wildly disruptive.
I agree. Also, why worry about the special education population where we look at their potential for skill regression after one week of recess? So two weeks of recess, I really wonder what, what compensatory services are going to look like for the district in order to make up potentially lost skills? That's extremely expensive.
I just had a question about Jimmy might know about athletics. I should know this, but it's the same. I didn't play basketball my senior year at high school because Mr. Spindin cut me. I would, not that I'm throwing that out there, but I, I, it's really an important point. I'm just being silly, but if we're out for those two weeks, does, does that impact athletics at all?
Athletics continue even during vacations.
Right, I should know that.
They never stop. They never stop.
On a snow day or something, you're not supposed to have athletics, but on a vacation day, you can.
It, it never stopped. Just to be clear, during basketball season, there was no day off at all during school vacation week.
I think Julie's point is a really good one about, you know, I think we all sort of assume this kind of rosy picture of everybody going home and having some time off, but parents have that we could create undue burdens, burden for parents and just exactly what Julie said about, we don't know what students' home lives are like, but that does seem kind of excessive.
So in looking at the calendar, because obviously I've had my face in it for a few weeks now, just to be clear, that December, if it was to be a two-week break, just for clarity purposes, it's really an additional two days because students are off the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, which is one week, then they're off the thirtieth, the thirty-first and the first. So I think, Mr. Luttery, what you were saying was instead of coming back on the second, have the second and third off. So it would be two additional days, not necessarily an additional full week because they're already off the half, more than half of that week.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. If any, you know, I certainly can go back to the union or I could come back with a revised schedule that looks like what was talked about tonight or you can decide that you want to vote tonight, whatever the pleasure of the committee is. I just wanted to put it out there that I can certainly redo the calendars if people need to see it differently.
In my previous years on the committee, we did take two or four weeks. It was a, it was a pretty good cost savings for us on utilities. I would be in favor of that. Probably not now, but maybe the year, maybe next, the year after, twenty-sixth. Could we look at that, do that maybe, just to see what it'll look like? I, I wouldn't want to do that now or want to change this. I think option one is the way to go. But I would definitely want to look at that because there was something we did do for a number of years. It was a pretty good cost savings.
It's a cost savings, but it's a challenge for families.
Those two days, but. All right, then I will move the, move to the vote. If you could have a roll call, please.
Who are you voting on?
Oh, we are voting on option one.
Let's just vote on option one.
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luttery?
No.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Farnson?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
No.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Sounds like our most divisive vote ever.
No, it's okay, it's healthy.
We're talking about vacation days.
It's healthy.
Teacher retirement buyback, unfinished business. Are we ready to take that up or?
Yes. So just, there was a, on that particular topic, there was some question about the language in the teacher's contract in that the language is specific to having to inform the committee by November first that you would be retiring and that you would be exercising your right to sick day buyback if you had it. So the November first date was met by one of the five, I believe I do have it written down, folks. However, the other folks were not far behind in their formal written letter. So when I looked at, I looked at a couple of things. I did speak with the union about it. So notification came in from one, two, three, four, five, actually six people and they all identified in their notification that they wanted to, to have access to their sick time buyback. However, not everybody did it by November first. So there were two schools of thought on that. You could deny them based on the fact that they missed the deadline, but of course, always thinking six months ahead, I wanted to see what our history was and what past practice was in that area because in my seven years, I don't believe we've ever denied anybody. And I have to be honest, I don't believe we paid attention to the November first rule. So this was a prime opportunity for me to meet with the school, with the, with the union, clarify the fact that, you know, we've recognized as a past practice of approving this, not meeting the deadline. I would be willing to do a memorandum of understanding with the union if in fact it would absolve us from this point forward from any past practice coming our way in the future. So what does that mean? That means if we allow these six people to do their buyback, then moving forward, anybody who wanted to complain about something in the past could not complain and in the future, the November first rule will stick. So people will have to notify us. There will be some transfers required. Another thing to focus on and listen, some of these experiences enlighten us, is how much money we put in the buyback of each school's line item budget. Went back and looked at the history of that, which has pretty much stayed stable for about fifteen years and it's just a certain amount of money that somebody obviously put in there in each line. So there is not enough money in each school to meet the needs of the people only because the majority of them are from the high school. So we'll have to move some money from, from some other line items to cover the cost at the high school. The total cost is around, mind you, there's six people, so they get a hundred dollars per day up to a hundred and eighty days.
Thirty dollars.
I'm sorry, thirty dollars, thirty dollars per day up to a hundred and eighty days. And one, two, three, four of the people have a hundred and eighty days accrued sick time. So we're going to go back and just go through that one more time, but I would recommend a positive vote to accept the retirements as well as their buyback request.
So it's six people at a hundred and eighty days times thirty.
So no, only one, two, three, four, five of them have a hundred and eighty days or more saved. Wait a minute, one, two, three, four, sorry, four have a hundred and eighty days or more saved in their accruals, two do not. One has one sixteen and one has eighty-three.
Twenty-seven grand.
So it's about twenty-seven thousand dollars in total in the budget itself. In those particular line items, there is approximately twenty thousand, so we'll move some money from other line items.
Who's on one who's next year?
Say it again.
One that's actually in November.
Oh, correct. Yeah, so that'll take that one down. So that, that number will come down by, because he's, I forgot he's not retiring until October, so it'll be put into next year's budget and so that number will come down to twenty-two oh five, twenty-two thousand and five dollars, which is minimal, minimal change. The transfers you're going to see is because one school doesn't have enough in that line, so I'll transfer from the other schools where they're not using that sick ba, bank, sick buyback line into the high school line.
Okay. So the vote for tonight is only for the buybacks, not the memorandum of understanding?
That's correct. There's the memorandum of understanding. I spoke with attorney Paul Hoden and he said we could do that between myself and the union president.
Okay.
We're allowed to do that where you're not changing the language of the contract. You're just making a note that you're going to be sticking to the contract moving forward and that there'll be no past practice in the future.
Okay. And this has gone through the committee, subcommittee or does not need to?
It does not need to because it's just basic retirement.
Okay. Then can I have a motion to approve the teacher retirement buyback as proposed by the superintendent?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Berry. We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Leonard?
Can we do discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion first. Yes, thank you.
So I, I just want to make sure I'm on the same, on the right page. This also, so this is to approve the retirement and the This also, so this is to approve the retirement and the buyback, or just the buyback?
So I believe it's to accept the retirement, and in accepting the retirement, they, they have the right in the collective bargaining agreement to buy back a hundred and eighty days if they should have at that time a thirty dollars a day.
Okay, so this is to approve the buyback of their?
Accept the retirement and approve the buyback, yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Just a point of clarification. When are they supposed to have this notification?
November first.
Of twenty twenty-three?
Of twenty twenty-three.
So if we knew November first, or January first, or February first, how's that changing anything? Budget's made in June.
Yeah, I know, so that's, right, really, it's not, it's not an issue, but, yeah.
But I mean, the memorandum doesn't, it makes no sense.
Well, the memorandum makes sense because you could deny it, because the contract language.
No, I understand we could deny it, but to have November first as an arbitrary date doesn't do anything.
Correct, so that, that's a note to self in the moving forward with collective bargaining that will, just like we did with teachers notifying us of changing lanes, remember we had to go back and set that back. Typically, we have one or two people retiring per year, so that's probably why it hasn't been on the radar, to have five people, four retiring this year, you know, and, and somebody retiring right in October, it just was a lot at once.
When do, when are retirements typically requested or announced?
Well, according to the contract, they're supposed to announce it by November first. So, you know, it, it depends upon the person, you know, it depends upon the person, you know, and you can't, your retirement date is synonymous with your birthday. So, you know, but a lot of teachers have retired, like, at the end of a school year, they'll either finish out the school year, or, because if they're already at eighty percent, it doesn't matter if you retire on your birthday or not, but if, if I retired on September fifteenth, and I was at seventy-eight percent, on September sixteenth, it becomes, my birthday becomes eighty percent, so it's a two percent delta for one day. So, you know, some people want to, somebody may be the person retiring in October, likely is at, you know, seventy-something percent, and if they wait till their birthday, they'll go up probably two percent higher, and so it makes sense. And we don't have the right to deny somebody to save their retirement date until their birthday.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutery?
Yes.
Mr. Mitucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purenson?
Yes.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Motion is approved. May I have a motion, oh, public relations.
I talked about stop, block, enroll. The high school honor roll has been posted on their school site, so I think that's super important to take a look at. Cradles to Crayons Clothing Drive is happening from the fourth to the fifteenth, which means it's over. It's over, so Patty put that in there, she forgot. So hopefully people did that. And today is the egg my yard.
Deadline.
Deadline. And they're not real eggs, they're plastic eggs, however, I don't put things past kids, but they're plastic eggs. So if you want to take advantage of that, you can reach out on the Class of Twenty Twenty Six Facebook page or with the high school webpage. That is all I have.
Any other public relations? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.